Okay, I will call the Monday, April 8th meeting of Dublin City Council back to order. And Jane, would you please lead us in the pledge?
My pledge of allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a couple of special recognitions this evening, and I have a feeling like those doors are going to swing open and we're going to be joined by the chaos that is out in the lobby. This is, and I'm going to turn this over to Christina Aludo, my fellow council member, who has a special recognition for the Jerome, Dublin Jerome High School cheerleaders. Come on in. Just keep going, keep coming. Anne might have the microphone for you.
Carla, true to form, their coach will be standing over here in the shadows. She doesn't want to be in the limelight, although I know all these girls do. It's all good. All right, so today I have a proclamation for you, girls. Whereas for the third year in a row, Dublin Jerome High School Division One Green Team won the Ohio Association of Secondary School Administrators State Cheerleading Championship on March 2nd, 2019. And whereas this year, Jerome, Dublin Jerome qualified three teams for the state championship placing first, second, and third. And whereas for the second year in a row, the Dublin Jerome stunt team finished second and the gold team was third. And whereas the Green Team, also known as the GGs, not only won the state competition, but also won their division within the Ohio Capital Conference. Now therefore, he Gregory S. Peterson, Mayor of the City of Dublin, Ohio, on behalf of Dublin City Council, do hereby congratulate the Dublin Jerome High School Competition Cheer Team led by Coach Carla Crawford and Assistant Coaches Beth Hercheck and Michelle Cooper on their outstanding achievements. Signed this 8th day of April, 2019, Gregory S. Peterson, Mayor. Congratulations, girls. So this team has worked incredibly hard over the last several years. There is one in here that I take special pride in, my daughter Amelia. She's the one turning eight colors of red right now. But each and every one of these girls has worked extremely hard. I've heard lots of people over my years in dealing with cheer tell me cheer is not a sport. That is just not true. These girls work insanely hard. They deal with injuries, they deal with stretching their bodies to the limit, just as much as any other sport, and I'm really, really proud of them. And I know that Carla is. I know her assistant coaches are. And I know that the principal, Dusty, is really proud of them as well. So one more round of applause for these awesome athletes. Thanks, girls. You want a picture?
I don't know.
Oh, you kind of, okay. Oh, you want me to write?
No, 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 why don't you do it?
Here. No, she won't. You guys have to do a cheer. So turn around. Face your council members. Come up with something.
Okay, we're just going to do a dance school piece that we did before. All right, let's see.
DJ HS, basketball, McDonald's, GGs.
Okay, yep, you can go. Well, you know, short and sweet's best sometimes. Now, Matt, good luck. You get to follow, I don't know, what was it, 24 18-year-old girls? Come on up, Matt. We're going to talk about Earth Week. Earth Month. Whereas Earth Day is an annual event celebrated on April the 22nd, which helps to raise awareness about environmental issues while promoting sustainable habits to protect resources in our community. And whereas a sound, natural environment is the foundation of a healthy society and robust economy. And whereas a sustainable environment can be achieved through educational efforts, public policy, and community advocacy. And whereas it is the city's desire to conserve resources and reduce greenhouse gas emissions, waste, litter, and pollution. And whereas the city aspires to protect the public health and welfare, including that of wildlife, vegetation, streams, and rivers, all of which enhance the quality of life for the community. And whereas coordinated efforts can help enhance environmental wellness and help to build a healthy community. And whereas during the month of April, the City of Dublin will offer a variety of opportunities such as household hazardous waste collection, volunteer opportunities for invasive plant removal, and native species planting, Kaufman Park water quality monitoring, food composting, education classes, and an Arbor Day event to answer questions about tree care, offer demonstrations in proper tree care, and provide free tree seedlings to residents. Now therefore, I Gregory S. Peterson, Mayor of the City of Dublin, Ohio, do hereby proclaim the month of April, 2019, as Earth Month, and encourage the support of green initiatives throughout Dublin, Ohio, and for others to undertake similar actions. Signed this 8th day of April, 2019. So Matt, I have a very nice proclamation for you that I will give, turn over to you, and maybe you could just comment on all those things that we're doing. Let us know how people can find out how to get involved with all that stuff.
You bet. Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Members of Council. Yes, we do celebrate Earth Month here in the City of Dublin. One day is not enough, a month is not enough. We could probably do it 12 months out of the year. We do have a series of programs throughout the year for people to get involved in, but just some of these things that we've got for April. You mentioned a few of these. Through the Recreation Center, you can sign up for a couple of these free classes or activities such as the Muddy Boots Hike, which is a Kaufman Park Quality Monitoring Program. We have a food composting program, gardening indoor, and patio herb plantings. There are fertilizing tips in the Recreation Brochure, as well as some landscape for wildlife hints and tips of whether you want to attract or detract wildlife. A couple of specific programs I'd like to mention, one of which is the Invasive Species Removal at Syota Park. We're continuing that program. If you want to take Monday, the April 22nd morning off from work, come out and join us. We'll be happy to entertain you and keep you busy. We also have the Arbor Day Celebration at Llewellyn Farms Park this year. So our forestry team will be out there to hand out free seedlings and provide some tree care tips and tricks and answer questions. So we invite the community to come out, and we can have all of that information online for people to understand when and where.
Fantastic. John?
So, interested, what kind of seedlings are we giving out to our residents, some of yours?
I don't know what the inventory is this year. It's usually a variety of ornamentals, along with some evergreens, deciduous, maples, and so forth. So it's usually a mix of several different types, but I don't know exactly what that inventory is this year.
Thank you.
That is April the 27th. That is Saturday, the day after Arbor Day.
Matt, did we reach out to any of the schools to find some of their environmental groups and see what level they'd be interested in participating in any of this?
Not specifically, but that's a great idea.
Might be a nice little thing to, maybe they'd want to come and help hand out seedlings or maybe remove some invasive species or something.
Great idea.
They have some good clubs.
Good idea. Yeah, that one puts, we put our money where our mouth is on this stuff. It's not just bike paths and green space, but all these other educational opportunities. It's really fantastic. So thank you, Matt. Could you stand your post just for a sec? Moving on to the citizen comment portion of the agenda, I have, these are four items that are not on the agenda, and three people have signed in. Amy Lawson, Nancy Cody, and Mike, is it Archer? Is that your last name? And they want to comment on the North Pool. And I, we absolutely 100% want to hear what it is that you have to say. The process in that whole community engagement conversation about the North Pool is just starting. And so one of the reasons I wanted Matt to stay put was to sort of help outline the different kinds of opportunities. I mean, there is a whole process, due process, that we're going through, that everybody is going to be, have an opportunity to be heard, to have their input, to see what their proposals are, and to be able to provide feedback and all of that sort of thing. We will listen to whatever it is that you want to have to say. That process, though, is just getting underway. And I know a lot of times people will feel that the train has already left the station and that things have already been decided and they, you know, this has all happened before they were even aware. That is not the case. These conversations are very preliminary and early on with the community. Matt, could you sort of outline for us what, where we are? Now, you don't have to give me a big, long list of everywhere we've been, but what the next opportunities for public engagement might be?
Sure. Yeah, we've had three public meetings thus far, as well as an online. On our website, we have a survey or comments for people to fill out and provide us that feedback as well. We're, like you say, we are in the very preliminary stages. Each one of these meetings, we learn something new of interest, we explore that, we go back to the community to discuss what we found and to solicit additional feedback. So we held a meeting last week at which the latest topic was discussed, and we've received quite a bit of feedback. There were 81 people in attendance that evening. Very vocal group, very engaged group. So we are going to provide City Council with that information and an update as to where we are in the process. As far as the public goes, we will be holding additional public meetings, multiple meetings. I would envision the next public meeting coming within the next three weeks, maybe four weeks, certainly probably in May. We will communicate to the community by way of all of our social media outlets, all of our email addresses we have on file, every means possible to get the word out, to get the people from the community there to provide us that input. So as soon as I have that information, we will directly contact those individuals who are at the meeting, which I know these fine people were at that meeting as well. So we should have all of those contact information, and we'll be providing that to everybody.
Okay. And I will pass this on to you, Matt, that has their addresses, just so we make sure, and then double-check make sure, make doubly sure, I guess, that they're getting the notices and things of that nature. You know, it's very difficult when you try to address a big project like that. You have to do it in sort of an organized progression of input and planning. And I know that, I know these seven folks extremely well. I do not know what any one of them thinks about the North Pool project because it's just in that still gathering information stages. So there'll be plenty of opportunity for you to give your feedback, and your voice will not only be heard, but we will also listen. So I'm happy to, you know, the way that our agendas work here, we have the citizen comments, which anybody can come in, any City Council meeting, and talk about whatever they want. You get five minutes. We can do that. We will listen to what it is you have to say. I'm not trying to cut off conversation. I'm trying to just make sure we have the appropriate conversations in the appropriate forums so that everybody else hears the same information. So I can have Matt step out into the lobby with you if you want to talk to him before you depart, or each one of you can come up, just as you have signed in, on an agenda that, on an item not on the agenda, this item is not on the agenda. So it fits the four corners of public comment. If any or all of you want to step up and speak, you're more than welcome. I just want to make sure you are aware, though, that we are in the beginning stages of a rather lengthy process of citizen engagement. So I guess I will leave it at that. Thank you, Matt, for staying up there. Amy, you were the first one that wrote your name down, so do you want to step up, or do you want to just continue down the road we're already on? Okay?
Thank you very much for listening to us, and it's nice to meet you, Kathy. You've gotten some emails from me recently, so here I am. I am Amy Lawson, and I'm speaking on behalf of my husband, Robert, and myself. 7609 Catawba Place, Dublin, Ohio. We're residents of the villas of Arlington. Only a couple of you attended the pool meeting last week, so we wanted to make sure all of you are aware of our displeasure of any type of increase to the size of the pool or addition of a retractable roof. These things would increase the already very congested street of Dublinshire. This would create very hazardous conditions for our residents as well as the children of the neighborhood. I have forwarded pictures to Kathy this week, taken both last weekend, this morning, morning and afternoon, highlighting the poor traffic flow of Dublinshire now, the lack of adequate lanes, blockage of our entrance into our community, which serves more than 45 residents back there, and children. The pool and school were never built to operate simultaneously. The two or so meets held last summer, or each summer, are really a nightmare for us due to the parking, the noise, the disruption of our quiet, safe community, and the traffic flow. We implore you not to waste any more taxpayer money setting the feasibility of increasing the size of this pool area. It would ruin Dublin's reputation for a well-planned community with such a large structure and surrounding supporting parking and lighting. A large retractable dome and increase of people in traffic would not be in keeping with the ambiance of our community, which we have all come to love and feel safe in. All of those in attendance to the pool meeting last week heard loud and clear from the neighbors, "We don't want bigger, we don't want more traffic, we don't want more noise," and the lowering of our property tax or values and other disruption of our community. Please just repair our pool and update the current pool for all of us to use, the people who pay for it. This is a pool for the entire population, not just a few. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lawson. Nancy, would you like to? You're the next one up, or are you guys?
Oh, we're switching up. My phone has my seat.
Okay. Mike Archer.
This came up in the past.
So first of all, as a citizen of Dublin, we really appreciate the fact that money's been allocated for redoing that pool. It's a, oh, Mike Archer, 5547 Villas Drive, Dublin. We really appreciate that money that's been allocated and also the fact that a 30-year pool is going to be redone. I'd like to revisit that 30 years for just a moment. Someone, whether it be City Council or school officials, 30 years ago came up with a brilliant idea, and that idea was, let's put a school, a swimming pool, and Arlington Park directly next to each other with one single parking lot that would accommodate all three facilities. And that plan has worked well for probably most of the 30 years. But just a few years ago, Windott Elementary School added a second story and added many classrooms, now has 620 students enrolled. As a result of that, what, that parking lot that had been used for parking and buses was modified to the point where now only buses use that parking lot and also must circle completely around the parking lot in order to exit. And that exit entrance, there is only one two-lane entrance. There aren't separate entrances for the park itself, for the school itself, and for the pool itself. So you've got a lot of traffic there based on just that one pool. And I think a critical issue is, what is going to happen to that parking area? Because now as well, since vehicles are not permitted in that area at dismissal time, at the arrival time, parents park out along Dublinshire. And so that entire length, east and west, and even over onto Arlington, become very congested, especially several times a day at dismissal time in particular. So as we look at the future of this, adding any kind of additional pool facilities is going to greatly impact, especially a year-round facility is going to impact that parking lot. Today, there were 80 cars parked in the lot, and most of those, I would imagine, belong to school staff. That lot holds about 125, so you can already see that 65, 70% of the lot is completely filled already. So as we think about the future in this project, what's going to happen with that parking area, what's going to happen particularly with the entrance, since there's only the one option in terms of gaining access to the school, the park, and the pool facility? So I'd really encourage that be given a lot of thought, become a critical issue in terms of what's going to, going to happen in terms of the entire project. Personally, I'm opposed to the year-round facility. I just don't see it as being viable right now, and I'll save the rest of those comments for a later date.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Archer. Okay, under the consent agenda, does any council member wish to rem, she didn't want to? Oh, she does want to?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Ms. Cody? Give us your name and address, please.
I'm Nancy Cody. I live at 7626 Catawba Place, across the street from the Lawsons who are here tonight. I have to say that I strongly disagree that there has been an open and transparent process around the building of this swim team year-round pool. The first time that I, as I'm president of our condo board, the first time I heard that there was any plan to put a roof over that pool and make it into a dedicated swim team facility was two weeks ago, about a week before the meeting. And we tried to spread the word as best we could, and as you can see, even with very little notice, an awful lot of people showed up to say, "This is impractical, just impractical for our street." There was a field trip done back in January to a retractable pool installed someplace in North Carolina. No one from the community was invited to go and take a look at this. Nobody in the community was told that it was even under consideration. And I guess I'm making a distinction between the swim team community, which is what they call themselves, and the community community, which I think is everybody else. I am very, very hopeful that the fix is not in, and this is not a done deal. But believe me, when I sat there at the meeting the other night, I had that, an awful feeling that this has gone so far that it may not, we may not be able to stop. And that's even before anyone in our neighborhood had a chance to say anything about it. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Cody. Okay. Onto the consent agenda. Stay tuned, we'll see you at the next community conversation about that. Onto the consent agenda, does anyone on council wish to remove any of the five items on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I make a motion that we approve those five items. Is there a second?
Second.
Anne?
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Onto the postponed items, final plat, Bridge Park East, Section 7. I see Vince, I do not see Clark. Vince?
Yes, Mayor, thank you, and members of council.
Mayor, Members of council. I know we're asking for your action tonight on the plat, but the law director may have information to share based on a request at the last meeting.
Thanks, Vince. Yeah, at the last meeting, we got a question about whether the city would be compensated for the areas that were to be vacated by the plat. We reviewed the 2015 Bridge Park Development Agreement and confirmed the shape of proposed lots 18 and 19 in the Block F plat conformed to the dimensions of Block F intended in the agreement, and all but a remnant of .107 acres was not expressly addressed in Section 4 of that development agreement. The .107 acre remnant was not included in the development agreement because at, in 2015, the city did not own that property yet. But it was intended to be, we've had a series of small transfers back and forth. In 2015, while there was a vision for the Bridge Park Development, it was impossible at that time to know every fine detail. While the development agreement states the area is intended to be transferred, again, we've had minor adjustments with final plats and with modifications to the development agreement as well. So staff's recommending approval of the final plat, but we're happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council?
I know I'd sent Dana a question, and I did not send it until today about all of the transfers to date, and I understand that that is going to take some time to put together, so I really.
Put that on that list and talk about it then. Any other comments or questions from council? I make a motion to approve the final plat. Is there a second?
Second.
Anne?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Second reading public hearing ordinances, Ordinance 08-19. Anne?
Authorizing the conveyance of certain real property and provision of certain incentives to the Ohio State University to induce it to establish a comprehensive ambulatory medical facility within the city, authorizing execution of a real estate purchase and sale contract, property reconveyance escrow agreement, and an economic development agreement.
I make a motion that we postpone the second reading public hearing to the April 22nd council meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Anne?
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Abstain.
Abstain.
Okay, I would just quickly like to just affirm staff for, that was a really wise decision to put that off so that we have adequate time for, you know, public input. We talk a lot in this room about how important public input is, and that's putting your money where your mouth is, so I certainly appreciate that.
Did we vote?
Yes.
Ordinance 09-19.
Adopting amendments to Sections 153.002, 060, 061, 063, 064, 065, 066 of the City of Dublin Codified Ordinances to amend the Bridge Street District Development Review Process Regulations.
Vince?
Mayor, Members of council. Tonight, we're requesting your approval at tonight's second reading of this amendment to the Bridge Street Code. In the packet, there were two minor revisions made to the ordinance declared to capture a couple of edits that did not make it into the document, but beyond that, there's no new information, so happy to answer any additional questions that you might have.
Questions from council?
I do. In looking at it, Vince, I was concerned about that, there's some expanded definitions of the concept plan review. And looking at it, I still feel as if the definitions aren't, are still too vague. If I look at it as if I were looking at the concept plan from a council's viewpoint, I feel like the criteria or the checklist for us to go through still needs definition. And that's something that I, I guess I'd like to have a little bit more understanding about. Maybe you can give us a little bit more explanation about how that was enlarged, because I think that's a big piece. It's a mandatory, it's binding, the concept review through council is binding, so I want to make sure that as we review it, that we have the necessary criteria clear enough.
Absolutely. And again, the concept plan comes to council when there's a development agreement, otherwise obviously it goes to planning commission. And based on earlier comments, we did make some additional tweaks to the definition, just trying to sort of better refine what that is. But by intent, the definition is fairly vague and broad, because we want to provide ourselves, as well as the commission and council, a more flexibility in terms of what it evaluates when the concept plan comes before it. It's our expectation that a concept plan will be a conceptual site plan, building massing, development program in terms of unit count, square footage, uses, and aspirational architecture at a minimum. There could be more things required by staff, depending on the complexity of the proposal, and in learning, you know, what's important as council evolves over time, the commission members themselves. And so I think we feel that we've done a good job trying to capture and really kind of box in and frame what a concept plan is. And just as a minor reminder, we're also being very. And just as a minor reminder, we're also being very consistent with the PUD District Code requirements as well, which has served the city well, so I think we're following in the footsteps of those requirements.
That's, oh, no, I was just going to say, I think, as I read through it, and it does refer back to the community plan and Bridge Street Code and the intent and all that, but just from experience, I feel as if when you're either sitting on planning zoning or you're sitting and reviewing these concept plans, you'll say, "Refer to the community plan." Well, that requires you to go back, take a look at the principles of the community plan, the vision principles, and sometimes, especially as you go from one new commissioner to another, and they're the ones who are going to look at it, that is an extra step, it's an extra effort. So if there was, to me, if there was a way that we had a much fuller explanation of, say, the principles of the community plan, just maybe bullet pointed those, and of the intent, and sort of set it out in one place so that you know that you can, very similar to what staff does when they look at an application, I think I'm looking for continuity. I'm looking for clearness, clarity, and continuity from one commissioner to the next, so they don't have to go back and interpret the community plan. The vision principles are laid out so that it's a little easier to review it. It's an even more efficient process for us to have this criteria.
If I could, I would note that the design guidelines do list all of the vision statement and all of the principles in detail in the design guidelines, so they are there in writing as well, and that's referenced in the code, so hopefully that is somewhat responsive to what your concern is. I'd also add that clearly the burden is on staff to make sure that those dots are connected as we assess a concept plan and prepare a staff recommendation, whether it's to the commission or council, both bodies would be seeing that as well, so hopefully those gaps are filled as part of the normal process that we have underway.
So can we make sure we tend to that the next time a concept plan comes in to connect those dots that Jane?
I mean, we certainly would. I think the fact that we put the principles in the design guidelines helps to do that, because right now, they're not as clearly delineated, except in the adopted plan, so we are trying to accomplish that intent upfront.
I'm just looking forward to be in one place and easily found, you have to go from one document to another to try to come up this criteria. And then also, one last thing before I give up the floor here, it's a recommendation by the planning department. Sometimes I think it's good to hear from the planning department on a concept plan what you liked about it, as well as what you wish were better. In other words, more than just a recommendation, that, especially when it's concept, I think you need to go to the pros and cons. You have to give us both sides of the argument.
Evaluation.
Yes, I think that's more important to us than a recommendation, because it creates the conversation necessary to see whether or not the plan is going to work for all the pieces and parts.
I certainly agree with that, and I would hope that the planning commission as well would do that, because the way we've written it, they do provide a recommendation to council in those situations, so I agree with you. It should be very much an objective assessment.
Because in a concept plan, you don't have to, you're not required to give a recommendation, correct?
I think we wrote the code that we do provide a recommendation, but again, it's staff's recommendation, that's just the first step in a much longer process, but I think we would try our best to point out the negatives and the positives, and we can condition the concept plan, just as we do a development plan today, which helps to speak to the issues that are of concern, only at a staff level.
I think, Jane, one of the things that we've struggled in this body with working with this is Item C under the review criteria on page ten of twenty-eight of the actual ordinance, and it talks about the illustrative lots and blocks supporting street and pedestrian network, internal circulation, providing a coherent development pattern that conforms to requirements of lots and blocks, street types, and I think one of the important things is we'll avoid adverse impacts on surrounding neighborhoods and traffic infrastructure. I think that's one of the big things that we struggled with here of not having that information of, you know, okay, well, I get that it's, you know, four hundred and twenty feet long and three hundred and eighty feet wide, but that doesn't tell me where the action is, where are we trying to get in and out? And I think that's going to help us a lot with the lots and blocks kind of analysis for a concept plan. It's not perfect, probably, and I think the burden is on staff to fill in those gaps that we don't even know what the gap is yet, or maybe we don't want to try to identify a gap, because then if we generate a list, and if it isn't on the list, then it doesn't need to be addressed. So I think your point is extremely well made. I just don't, this is going to help us a lot. I don't know that it gets us totally across the finish line, but I think the only people that can carry us across that finish line is staff.
And in saying that, I think, too, there's a lot of learning here for both Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as for council, when they look at these development plans, is to, and maybe that's a work session, that we begin to really look at how we evaluate a concept plan, because many times it'll come, it's just a sketch, and it's not enough to then send someone off to go ahead and spend taxpayers' dollars. If you don't have really good, and I think that's what I'm looking for, I'm looking for ways to give us the tools necessary to be able to do a really good job of using criteria that we have defined well enough that we not only can use it, but the next council person that come here doesn't have to have that whole retraining over again. So that's, I'm looking for good due process.
Kathy?
Yeah, and my comment, I think from last time still holds a bit, what is it that we're asking the developers to bring in to make sure that we get the concept? So of importance to me were, what is the expectation of the developer? Because often we hear, "Well, it's too early for that, it's too early for that, it's too early for that." So if we're going to look at lots and blocks, let's make sure the documents that we receive give us clear enough definition of that, because I loved the conceptual, during my time on planning and zoning, the conceptual feedback. I thought that was great, because early on, you get to see that. The challenge with that was always, "Well, it's too early, we haven't done that, it's too early, we haven't done that." So when some of these fundamental ones, like lots and blocks and some of these, we need to make sure that the developer knows, this is the core set of stuff that we need to look at, and I think the combination of those things will be helpful. But I know it's a bit of a learning process, but being clear to them removes some frustration on, I think, on everybody's part, so connecting that dot, I think, is important. But I think the concept plan is a great idea, it's just working through the specifics here, and maybe we just have to live it a little bit and see how she comes back, so thank you.
Anybody else? Ann?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amherose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ordinance ten dash nineteen, Ann?
Authorizing the city manager to execute necessary conveyance documentation to accept the dedication of a zero point zero four four acre more or less permanent utility easement, zero point zero zero seven acre more or less permanent utility easement, zero point zero zero seven acre more or less permanent utility easement, zero point two six five acre more or less temporary construction easement, zero point zero four two acre more or less temporary construction easement, and a zero point zero zero seven acre more or less temporary construction easement from the Muirfield Association, Inc.
More or less. More or less.
Members of council, I have no additional information to provide on this item this evening, apart from what was presented at the first reading. Staff does recommend adoption.
I would just express our appreciation again to the Muirfield Association. They have done this once again, dedicated, donated their property in their easements. We greatly appreciate that.
For every, I think, for the past ten, twenty years, we've asked them for property, and they have been the one group in our city that just has come up every time and given up their property with no expense to the city or their fellow taxpayers, so they should be lauded for that.
Yes, greatly appreciated. Any other comments from council? Ann?
Vice Mayor Amherose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks, Paul. Ordinance eleven dash nineteen, Ann?
Amendment in Section one fifty-two point zero eight six relative to the subdivision regulations to provide for appraisal of properties when calculating fees in lieu of required open space dedication and repealing ordinance seventy-six eighteen, which previously established fee in lieu for open space dedication.
Vince?
Mayor, members of council, no new information to share tonight, but request your approval of the ordinance, pending any other questions.
Any other questions from council? I think we flushed them all out at the last meeting. Ann?
Appreciate all your work.
Ann?
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amherose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
First reading public hearing ordinances, ordinance twelve dash nineteen.
Authorizing the provision of certain incentives to Nexient LLC to induce it to lease a facility to locate an office and its associated operations and workforce, all within the city, authorizing execution of an economic development agreement.
I will introduce it. Colleen?
Good evening. So we have been working with Nexient, who is looking for a new central Ohio location. It will be their first entry into the central Ohio and the Ohio market. They're headquartered in Silicon Valley. They are an agile development firm. What's unique about them is they're one hundred percent U.S.-based with their employment, which is very exciting. They have had much success in other college towns like Ann Arbor and the Lansing, Michigan area. They are committing to create two hundred new tech jobs by the end of 2022, and in return, we have proposed a five-year, twenty percent performance incentives on the withholdings collected that is capped at three hundred thousand dollars for the term of the agreement, and they would be required to sign three back, I'm sorry, two back-to-back three-year leases. The state of Ohio also has passed an incentive to bring this company to the state. They will be present at second reading. I'm hopeful that they will announce their location then at that meeting. They are still working on their lease term, and I can answer any questions that you have.
Great. Any questions from council? Seeing none, thank you, Colleen. I guess we'll see you back on April twenty-second.
Thanks.
Ordinance thirteen dash nineteen, Ann?
Adopting and enacting a supplement to the Code of Ordinances for the City of Dublin, Ohio.
Jennifer?
Good evening. As you know, council adopts a supplement prepared by Arcotifiers American Legal Publishing several times a year. This most current supplement includes local legislation approved by city council through December thirty-first of 2018 and state legislation current through August second of 2018. We recommend approval of the ordinance at the second reading.
I will introduce it, Ann. Sorry, I skipped that. Anything else, Jennifer?
Yep.
Questions from council? Michael, you got any?
Yes.
Housekeeping.
Well, we have a list prior to second reading of the actual language.
So we have the documents in the clerk's office, so we can certainly, we usually leave it for inspection, I believe.
I didn't see those loaded on BoardPac. Were those on?
Oh, we didn't actually load that.
It's like, it's a?
No, we can do that, we can do that.
Certainly.
Do you want that, or you want just the code section listed?
I want what we're voting on.
The redlined version of what was?
Oh, the ordinance itself?
Well, no, the content of the ordinance. So we're making significant changes to our codified ordinances, and I'd just like to peek through them to make sure that there's not something in there that we maybe don't want in our codified ordinances.
We can do that before the next council meeting?
Sure.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, Resolution seventeen dash nineteen, Ann?
Authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Franklin County Commissioners for the administration of wireless nine-one-one government assistance funds.
It's my pleasure to, I will introduce it, and I will also introduce Chief Weiss.
Thank you, members of council. Good evening. Resolution seventeen dash nineteen is a recommendation to authorize the city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Franklin County Commissioners for the purpose of receiving dispersed funds from the wireless nine-one-one governmental assistance funds. The agreement is required in order to receive the wireless funding provided by the twenty-five cents per month charge on every wireless device. Allocated funding pays for the county nine-one-one coordinator position, the next-generation nine-one-one fund pays for countywide mapping and allows for dispersments of the four funded answering points, Columbus Franklin County Sheriff's Office, Grove City, and Dublin. Allocated funds for the City of Dublin in the proposed agreement with Franklin County Commissioners continues to be a hundred and thirty thousand dollars each year. Staff recommends approval of the resolution.
Thanks, chief. Any questions from council? Chris?
Do we have a projected revenue number on that increased nine-one-one?
I'm sorry, a projected revenue number for?
The dispatch services, so we were one of four entities listed in there that would be recipient of this, these funds to be distributed.
Of the distributed funds, yes.
Do we have a number of what that distribution's going to be?
Yeah, that's actually a hundred and thirty thousand is the same that we have received in the past. It did not change for us.
There won't be any increase?
There will not be an increase for us.
But there's some increases for some entities?
There were increases for some entities. If you give me just a moment, I believe the only increase was for Columbus, and they had an increase in this proposed distribution, and Franklin County had a decrease. We actually remain the same, however.
Unfortunate. But I do want to pass on, I received, I had a conversation with one of our neighbors in Worthington this week that was inquiring about this nine-one-one service, and, you know, it's really nice to be able to tell them what a great job you guys do with that, so.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for representing well in that.
Thank you.
Anything else? Ann?
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amherose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
And Ms. Fox?
Yes.
And Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Resolution eighteen dash nineteen, Ann? Adopting a statement of services for proposed annexation of one point two nine acres more or less from Jerome Township, Union County to the City of Dublin.
Jennifer?
Introduction.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you.
Jennifer?
The property to be annexed is located at eighty-seven hundred Highland Quarry Road. The Union County Commissioners have set the annexation hearing for April twenty-fifth at ten a.m. Pursuant to Ohio revised Code seven oh nine point oh three, city council needs to adopt a resolution stating what services the city will provide to the area to be annexed upon annexation. Resolution eighteen nineteen sets forth all the services we can provide to the territory upon annexation. Since the property is within the proposed annexation area, the community plan, and is within the exclusive Dublin expansion area as defined in the water and sewer agreements with City of Columbus, we would recommend approval of the resolution, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council?
I just have one. So under fire protection and emergency medical services, the second sentence there says, "Dublin will ensure that fire and EMS services will be provided to the property at the same or similar level now being provided to other areas of the city." Can you just articulate for us so we have it somewhere? How?
Sure. So currently, Jerome Township Fire provides services to the property, and it's been our practice in the past to require a regular annexation. It's a technical distinction, but it allows Dublin to conform boundaries once the annexation is complete. When the boundaries are conformed, we can move that territory into Washington Township Fire Department and have consistent services across the city.
And that is something that would happen, not could happen?
We have always followed up those annexation ordinances with boundary adjustments.
I just wanted to outline how we're going to book that. I think I knew the answer, I just wanted to make sure that...
So while Washington Township's the, just for everybody, Washington Township's the provider, we're the enabler to enable that to be provided.
We're the, Washington Township is the fire marshal for the city then, and that's where in the authority comes from.
I just wanted that to be in the record, because it doesn't say how we'll do it. Certainly.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amherst Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
And Mayor Peterson?
Yes. Resolution 19-19.
Acceptance of the lowest investment bid for the Westbridge Street Landscape Enhancement Project.
I'll introduce it. Matthew?
Good evening, members of council. Resolution 1919 is the acceptance of the bid for the Westbridge Street Landscape Project. You'll recall that this project was reviewed by the Community Development Committee last year, part of our CIP process. The bids came back very favorable. We had a budgeted amount for this project of $250,000. The lowest bid came in at $145,629 from Brookside Construction Service. This project is the gateway enhancement along the corridor from the interchange eastward towards Corbin Mill intersection. A whole series of landscape improvements will be taking place in that area. We hope to get those projects started this spring. We've checked all the references for Brookside Construction Service. We recommend approval of this resolution. We have our landscape architect, manager, Sean Kowetski here. If you have any detailed plant questions, be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from council?
I have some questions. As I recall from our discussion, that we were excluding, or thought we were going to exclude, the sugar maples because they're least able to flourish in urban environments with hard surfaces, asphalt, concrete. And it appears this is like the major tree, right? It's going down the street?
Yes.
So, I thought we had a discussion about, let's not have those. And then there was a discussion about the inkberries and how they lose their foliage in the lower parts of them. And we were going to switch all this out and try to come up with hardier plants. And then I think there was, I think there was a discussion about if we're going to buy these trees for the city, that we buy them in a hardiness, I don't see this in this contract, maybe it's already included in it, that the trees would be purchased in our hardiness zone or above us in a colder climate so we don't have them freezing out and dying and frostcracking. And I think all those things were included in that discussion. But now I see this has come back, and it says sugar maples, inkberries, things that I thought we had discussed to be read of. And then it said here under 1A, due to the number of plants already purchased, including the I-270-33 contract, sugar maples, inkberries, and daylily plants, alternatives were not an option. But this contract was just left, let. So, I don't understand this. What do you mean, they were purchased already? And can you just clarify some of this?
I can certainly let Sean talk some of those details. The interchange project, the landscaping project for that was what that was referring to. The plant material for that project was already purchased. So, the swapping of those out was not an option for that project. This project here is a different inventory of plants. I'll let Sean talk.
Yeah. So, the sugar maples were purchased as part of the 270-33 interchange project. So, the sugar maples were already set. We have eliminated them. They're no longer in the medians. So, they're going to be on the south side of Westbridge. So, it's going to be more in the lawn areas. In fact, they're no closer than like 22 feet to the roadway itself because ODOT won't allow them any closer. And that's the only place the sugar maples will be.
So, we're not purchasing the sugar maples from this Brookside Construction Service? We're only purchasing their installation?
I believe, no. There's, I believe there's only seven remaining in this to continue what was already installed as part of the 270-33.
Wait a minute. Clarify that. There's only seven remaining trees?
Correct.
To finish the project?
To finish that length of streetscape. Because the other, I think it was like 18, were installed as part of the 270-33 interchange project.
When was, when were they installed?
They were installed last November.
So, what are we, what are we buying? We're buying seven maples?
For $145,000, what are we buying? How many trees? How?
Most of the trees that are in this particular contract are the ivory silk lilac. There's 47, I believe, of them.
Okay.
And then there's a number of arborvitae that'll be on the north side of Westbridge along the ditch line.
They're going to be out of the salt spray zone, I presume?
Correct.
Okay.
There's more daylilies. There's some dosher red twig dogwoods, other stuff that's salt tolerant that will make up more of the, I guess, the gateway feature, the more decorative planting at the corners.
And we ended up with the sugar maples because of the 270-33 project?
They had already purchased them, and that was decided, and they were already set aside and purchased prior to me actually being here.
Okay. So, they were put in storage or something, or?
No, they're in the ground. Those, theirs are in the ground. We are finishing.
There was only so many of them that were purchased as part of that contract.
Okay.
So, this is an extension to bring us up to Fran's Road from what was part of that contract.
All right. So, do we have in this contract a clause that says, because really, a lot of the sugar maples today come from McMinnville, Tennessee, which is like three or four hardiness zones below us, and then we have frostcracking, and then they get bores, and they die, and we have to constantly replant this stuff. So, does the contract stipulate that all these trees have to be in our, and all these plants, really? So, we don't have to keep buying this stuff?
So, the specs require that the landscape contract provide me with sources, and I have the full authority to say that we do not want that from that zone and that we want them from a northern zone.
I'd suggest that you have bills of lading, okay, from the supplier, and that you read those. And that's what you're going to do. And then you're going to call them back and find out if they actually were purchased there.
Typically, I make them give me photographs as well as the, you know, where the nursery's at, or the supplier that they're purchasing it from.
Yeah.
But we can follow up as well.
I think, yeah. We just probably got to stop buying stuff that we're constantly replacing that eventually dies out, or it sits there for years and doesn't grow. And five years later, it hasn't grown a bit, and 70% of the plants die out.
I guess, too, I'd just like to clarify for the public that a lot of this stuff is under warranty, too. So, it's, I understand, but we do get warranted product, and it has to be replaced. I don't, what if I think we buy stuff and then we don't put it under warranty?
No, it's not that. It's that...
I understand what you're saying. Beyond the warranty, I got that, but I also, I'm just saying, I want everyone to understand we have warranties.
Yeah. All this stuff lasts about a year, year and a half or two before it starts dying. So, yes, you can easily give a warranty on this kind of thing, but it's really not what is going to be the big guarantee.
Sean, prior to when we sign off on these sugar maples, can, is there a way that we could do an inspection on the ones that are in the ground and look for southwest sunscald? And I suspect particularly after this winter, we are going to have to wrap these trunks, particularly in that kind of environment. I don't think anyone ever suggested that we have a permanent wrapping, other than a seasonal wrapping of the trunks. But that can't be an option. That's going to have to be mandatory if we go with the maples.
So, to answer that question, EMI was the landscape contractor that planted the trees that are there currently. We are in the process of starting that warranty discussion because there were some leaf drop, early leaf drop that happened this last fall. So, we told them that they needed to be flushed out in the spring for us to accept them anyway. Their warranty will extend through November, but if we find that they have failed prior to that, we'll have them replaced. And at that point, I'm trying to get this time so that we can have this conversation with EMI so that if there's a chance to switch the tree, I can also talk with, then, Brookside to switch the other seven.
You know, this is a really good opportunity for you to also ask whoever your last contractor was, and I don't want to mention his name, that they also provide northern grown trees. Because in the industry, I'd have to say on these commercial jobs, I'm seeing somewhere between 80 and 95% of all the plant material shipped up out of the South. That means Florida, Tennessee, Arizona. And why? Because they have a long growing season down there, and you can save 30 to 60% and cheat like holy hell if people aren't aware of what's going on in that green industry. So, I think we might want to tighten that up a little bit.
Yep. Unfortunately, I didn't have an opportunity to review those particular plants from the 270-33.
Sean, I would just encourage you to do an inspection before we sign, before we execute this contract, and ask the contractor for a recommended substitution, because they don't want to keep planting the same plant that's going to die either. Nobody wins. It's a loser for everybody, so...
Sure. And we're meeting, we've got a meeting scheduled with the Brookside contractor on Wednesday to go over the scope and have some of those discussions.
But it would be prudent to have your inspection done before you meet with them and, and a proposed substitution if that, if we head that direction. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Thanks for the information.
And Sean, do you, just because we'd like to see it, could you forward us a copy of the landscape plan so we can see what the plan looks like on the...
They were in the plan room, but yeah, I can do that as well.
Oh, if it's digital? Yeah, I can check the plan room. Okay.
Kathy?
So, the bid came in about $100,000 less than we had estimated. Are we doing everything we said we were going to do? Why such a difference between what we thought?
So, there was a couple of points about the change in the amounts. One, we got a really good bid. Some of our local contractors that bid it were closer to 200,000. But there were also some trees that were removed from the median because ODOT would not permit them to be there. So, there was some reduction of costs because of some of those changes that were required by ODOT.
Because there's such a delta to what we thought, are there other things we couldn't should be doing in that particular landscaping? Because I know during the course of our discussion, we, you know, we talked long and hard about how important that beautification is. So, are we going to be happy with it when we're done, or should we be doing something additional with that funding?
So, with that additional funding that's potentially available, we have the option, then, to do some of these and work with the contractor on shifting some of the plants. And like we talked about in the memo, I believe, we're going to add some additional color plantings behind the daylilies and such. So, it just gives us some more flexibility.
Is anything allowed in the median? Do they allow anything in the median?
Shrubs are allowed. Any tree that'll get over four inches in diameter, they consider a safety risk, so they will not allow it.
The shrubs are, or wildflowers are color, that's allowed. And you're planting that, you think?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Anything else from council? Anne?
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amherst Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Resolution 20-19.
Accepting the lowest investment bid for the 2019 parking lot maintenance program.
Paul?
Introduce it.
Members of council, on March 20th, we opened four bids for our 2019 parking lot maintenance program, which consists of work at five city-owned parking lots, which were identified in your packet. The engineer's estimate for this project was $335,000, which is also the amount that was programmed in the CIP for this work. Chemco Incorporated submitted the lowest and best bid in the amount of $298,784.70. Work is scheduled to be complete by October 25th of this year. We will communicate rigorously to the public about this work to minimize inconvenience. We have had favorable experience with Chemco. They actually performed last year's parking lot maintenance program and did a very good job. So, staff does recommend approval of this ordinance this evening. Be glad to answer any questions.
Questions from council?
I nominate whoever opened these bids, open all bids from this point.
We are. We have a lucky knife that we use to open the bids.
My goodness. Anne?
Vice Mayor Amherst Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Resolution 22-19.
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the 2019 street maintenance program, phase one. Right?
I'll introduce it.
Stay with Paul.
It is the bidding season. So, the next day, on March 21st, we opened five bids for the 2019 street maintenance program, phase one. That work primarily consists of six roadways that are typically uncurbed, so it's higher production work. So, for instance, Muirfield Drive, Highland Croy Road, Hootred Road, and a few others. We are in the process of bidding phase two presently, which should, the bids do open on April 28th. The engineer's estimate for phase one was $2.9 million. Kocosian Construction submitted the lowest and best bid at $2,689,443.50. It has been a while since we've worked with Kocosian Construction. They did our program several years ago. In terms of communication, once again, we will communicate very closely with the public. This work is anticipated to be done by the first part of November of this year. Staff recommends approval of this resolution this evening.
Questions from council?
I have one question. This will include the bike path paving on Memorial Drive?
Correct.
Because our failures seem to...
Muirfield Drive?
Muirfield Drive.
Correct.
Because our failures seem to always happen on the seam. And although the pavement on the bicycle path, or the bicycle track itself, isn't in that bad a shape, I'm afraid if we disrupt everything and pull the rest of the asphalt off, run all that paving equipment over, it would soon follow.
No, we're going to have a uniformed surface from edge to edge.
Good. Thank you.
Anything else from council? Kathy?
Yeah. Question, I see Highland Croy Road is on this list.
Correct.
What section of that? Because that's not largely in Dublin.
Majority of it's the northern end, up near Tartan West, and then up near Glacier Ridge Elementary, north of McKittrick, where it's primarily failing, generally speaking. I can give you the exact limits if you'd like.
It's on that map. It is on that map.
Yeah, it's a little hard to see.
Number two.
Yeah. I need bigger glasses or something, I'm telling you. Okay. Thank you.
Is that it? Anne?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amherst Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
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 Yes.
Resolution 22-19.
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the sanitary sewer maintenance program.
Stay right there, huh, Paul?
I'm hanging in there. So, on March 14th, we actually opened two bids on our 2019 sanitary sewer maintenance program, general construction services contract. This is a contract that's bid on a per unit hour cost basis, which provides costs on an hourly rate for labors, foremen, and equipment. And it's really the best way that we have to evaluate the bids when they come in. This program provides for maintenance on our sanitary sewer system, that which is programmed, and then also certainly emergency repairs. This program carries us through the end of this year. This first is a one-year contract with an additional renewal period, so it essentially can be a two-year contract. County Construction submitted the lowest bid at $1,750 per unit hour. Their previous bid two years ago was $1,610 per unit hour. So, as that indicates, they have had this contract before. They did a very good job with it. The staff does recommend approval of this resolution this evening.
Questions from council? Hearing none. Anne?
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amherst Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Resolution 23-19.
Demonstrating the city of Dublin's cooperation with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the development and designation of state bike Route 39.
I will introduce it. I will introduce Resolution 22 as well.
Thank you.
I skipped. Where's Paul when you need him? I guess Megan, you're handling this?
All righty.
Good evening, members of council. The Ohio Department of Transportation has been working to designate Ohio's first US and state bike route network that will build off the US bike route system. A goal of this effort is to establish a network of routes which will provide long-distance experienced commuter bicyclists with connections through and to population centers and destinations in Ohio. The over 1,600-mile proposed system will also serve to connect more than 400 Ohio communities and local and regional bike networks across the state for interstate, intrastate travel, recreation, and tourism. We included a guide document in your packet with, which was issued by ODOT, and it has additional information for your use. The proposed state bike Route 39 serves as a north-south connection across the state and would pass through and connect the city of Dublin along a portion of Highland Croy Road from McKittrick Road to just north of Glacier Ridge Boulevard. This route will provide multiple connection points to the city of Dublin's recreation pass system. If signs are needed in the short stretch of Route 39 that falls within Dublin, designation, sign locations would be approved by Dublin staff. ODOT would install the signs, and the city of Dublin would be responsible for maintenance of the signs. Until ODOT has all of the routes designated, we won't know where those signs will fall along the route. So, we might end up with one or two signs, or maybe no signs, within that short stretch. For a route to be designated, ODOT is requesting local jurisdictions provide a resolution for the development and designation of state and US bike routes in their community. To date, they have secured nearly 72% of the 403 resolutions that are needed from local jurisdictions. Staff recommends council adoption of Resolution 23-19, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. I also have a map of all of the routes that they're planning pulled up on the screen, in case you would like to see that.
Any questions from council?
Megan, can you tell us anything about the path that this route will follow? Is it, obviously, it's not a rails-to-trails. It's far too crooked for that. But what, what paths are they looking to follow?
Or they're just going to say that now you can ride your bike on this road even though you could before?
At this point, this is a starting point, it designates the routes. And the bicyclists that are targeted for these routes are the more experienced cyclists that would be more comfortable traveling with vehicles in their lane. So long-term, the idea would be that, once these routes are all designated across the state, having a route designated would assist local communities with obtaining funds, possibly through ODOT, to possibly improve those sections of roadway to accommodate bicyclists better.
So it looks like it's largely home road? Is that the right road I'm seeing there?
No, actually, the portion that's within, I can zoom in on our section.
All the way to the west.
So it's this very, very small stretch of Highland Crow Road that falls within Dublin's corporation limits.
So two signs should do the trick.
Touches Dublin enough that it can-
Greg will go ahead and take care of the maintenance of those signs.
I will maintain the signs.
The idea is that the routes take these bicyclists to the community, so it just touches Dublin, but it provides access via our recreation paths.
Now we know. Okay, so is this, is this the reason for the repaving of this particular stretch? This is the same stretch, or no?
Paul? Paving of Highland Crow Stretch is the paving within this area?
I mean, this, this is where we're paving. This is where we're paving, is it related?
They're not connected at all, no, no. This planning effort with ODOT has been underway for approximately two years.
Oh my God, it's just a sign. Shakespeare said that.
They're just looking at for our purpose to designate-
Try, Michael. Any other conversation? We've already talked about this for too long.
Yeah, real quick, do they mark these? I mean, so the people know where these bike paths are in the city of Columbus? They, they actually mark the roadway, so bicyclists know that that's the road. Is it just signage, or do they mark the pavement at all?
These will initially be identified via signage, not pavement.
Greg will maintain it.
You go from here to here.
Greg's way, just go ahead and put it on.
That's right. Okay, can we just go, we're gonna go ahead and vote.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yeah.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Okay, onto the other portion of the agenda. It is my pleasure to welcome Mr. Tom Stroop to the microphone. Tom serves as our, the chairman of our Community Services Advisory Commission. He's been on that commission for probably, what, three years now? Two years?
Three.
Three years, and the last year he's been the chairman. So, Tom, take it away.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Nick?
That was excellent, Tom. That was very well done. Now I know why you're the chairman. Yeah, it was fantastic.
Good evening, members of council. I will be very brief. I'll just give a quick overview of the process that we worked through with the, with the Community Services Advisory Commission. September of last year, city council referred the topic of electric scooters to the Community Services Advisory Commission. In October, we, staff introduced the topic of scooters to the commission, focusing on where the devices are currently allowed within the city limits and the positions of various municipalities around the central Ohio region. We continued that discussion into the November and December meetings. They're sort of focusing in on different pilots across both the state and the country, and honing in on maybe challenges and opportunities within the city of Dublin for this type of program. We ended that December meeting with a request from the commission to conduct a community survey around community interest of electric scooters. So in January of two thousand and nineteen, the commission decided not to be allowing city staff to conduct that survey. We closed that survey toward the end of that month, and then presented the survey results at the February meeting. There, the Community Services Advisory Commission ended their discussion, and that's where I'll hand it off to Mr. Stroop.
It was a very comprehensive survey, by the way. Appreciate all the input and the detail that came with it.
It was. The, the results were surprising a little bit, but not out of the realm. And that, that weighed heavily into our decision that the commission made. So it was a lengthy process, one that we did not take lightly. There were some jokes when it started out with the scooters, and not quite sure if, if we were gonna have to demonstrate riding them or not. We chose not to. However, we did have a lot of good discussion, a lot of detail from staff, which we greatly appreciated. And we kept going back time and time again, asking for more information. So it was, again, a lengthy process, but one that was very worthwhile. We did come up with the recommendation that, at this time, we felt that there was nothing to do. We would leave everything as is. However, we left the door open, that we would like to reconsider it as technologies improve. Maybe in six months, we're not talking about scooters, it's something else. But then also, to continue the discussion as to what do we do with the shared-use paths.
Jane?
Yes, I happen to have a scooter, but it's not the kind of scooter that you're used to seeing, that you would see the rental scooters. It's called the Last Mile, I think I've, I've told you about it. It folds up, it's twenty-five, it's lightweight, it's just about twenty-five pounds. You can take it with you on a subway, you can take it with you on the bus. I bought it for my husband, who's handicapped, thinking that he would be able to get around better. So my suggestion would be this. I think the problem with electric scooters is when you have the rental agencies, and they become everywhere. But I live on the bike path on Dublin Road, and last night I was working in the yard, and I saw little kids on their little electric scooters, you know, going down the street. Personally, I like the idea that you have not made a total decision. I think for those people who need them, and the few that use them, they're not a problem. I think they belong in the shared-use path, because I would be afraid to ride mine in the street. But on the other hand, I'm not favoring that we have rental agencies in here, and we flood our streets with electric scooters, because I think that's where the problems arise. I think that respect and courtesy on the shared-use path is probably the, the way we should be looking at how we manage our shared-use paths. So I, I think there should be etiquette rules that are posted about that sort of thing. But I think bikes go just as fast as these little scooters do, and we allow them on the shared-use path. So I, I appreciate the fact that, that maybe they could be ridden in the street under twenty-five miles an hour. But that would be my opinion, and I, I like the idea that you went through so much trouble to do this survey. And I think it revealed where the concerns were. And so, yeah, that, that's on my part, I think, important to know, that there are some people who absolutely could use these, and they should have a safe place to ride them.
I think the handicap is a great point. It was interesting to me, of the three hundred and six public comments you got, nary a one was positive about scooters. Almost exclusively, they were, "No, thanks." So I, I think it's good to not take action at this point in time, and, you know, going one direction or another. But I think the overwhelming community comments, it seemed like in the, when you just asked the question, the thumbs up, thumbs down, was seventy, thirty split. But when people took time to make a comment, it almost exclusively was no.
Correct.
That was interesting.
You know, the insurance industry's weighed in on, on this across the country, and there's been significant injuries. There's maintenance issues with these companies. Some public entities prohibit them on the street, and also prohibit them on the, on the shared-use path, so there's really no venue. I've seen some of that happen. The other thing is, it's a motorized vehicle, and as such, your insurance coverage does not cover you if you're on the street and get into an accident, or if you cause an accident. If you cause a car to run off the road and hit somebody else, or cause a fatality, you're gonna have a serious liability issue personally. So there's all kinds of issues related to it, and the rental companies in particular, they're having a lot, a lot of issues, so.
Yeah, I, I would kind of echo a lot of what we're, what you've already heard. I, I think until some of the laws catch up with, and the insurance catches up with the use of these, or whatever the next mobility device may be, as you stated, it might be something other than scooters. You know, but to Jane's point, I very much agree that there's some etiquette that needs to be learned and displayed. And, you know, my, my mother certainly has mobility issues, and so I think it'd be something that might be okay for someone like her. But that's really difficult to, to try to regulate. And, you know, I firsthand, you know, working down on campus and seeing what can happen when things go awry with these scooters. And the numbers of scooters are now much less than they were when they first entered on the scene, which was a disaster. So I, I think it's fine to say, right now, we're good where we are. I like the idea that you're keeping the door open, and that's your recommendation, because things do change rapidly. We could revisit this in six months, and, you know, laws have caught up with things, and the insurance companies have caught up with things, and all of a sudden, we're looking at a different mixture and a different picture. I appreciate that you took this very seriously, because you're right, it's kind of fun and kind of cool. But it is serious, and it does affect how people get around and go from place to place. So I very much appreciate your work. Thank you.
Kathy?
Thank you. What I think is interesting is that when the, a lot of the valuation, when I looked at it, think about this as recreation, not transportation. And a lot of the activity going on at transportation organizations, CODAs and others, are thinking about microtransit. And I saw microtransit a couple times in the feedback from, from the community. So there's so much movement, no pun intended, I guess, movement away to think about, how do we connect the different types of mobility? And what do we think about microtransit? And I think over the next twenty-four months, we're gonna learn a lot in this field. And I, I think it's, it's going to, it may not look exactly like it's looking today, but I think particularly in urban environments, which is not necessarily what we're talking about, I think we're gonna see some real advancements in what we call microtransit. And so I, I'm, I'm glad that the committee is staying open to that, because I, I think it's just such early days here. But I think the opportunities from a transportation and really equity, and ease of traffic, and all sorts of things, I think we're gonna see some real movement in, you know, in this. And, and we need to, we need to pay attention to that and prepare for that, I think.
You know, Tom, thanks for all the effort that went into this. I, I have to agree with Jane that I think in the end, you know, whatever, however this evolves in the future, the, the shared-use paths is the place to put these kind of small devices. I went down and I rode the Lime, and then I rode the Bird, and found it very interesting. But I think the demographics and the way our city's suited is not like campus with ten-jillion young kids running around. But if a businessperson or somebody wants to run to Bridge Street from Cardinal Industries and have dinner, I don't think we're exactly the same way, set up the same way as a lot of other municipalities are. You know, there'd be a lot less use, it would be a convenience thing to use on occasion, and I don't think it'd be thrown all over the place where they were down at the short north and on campus. So let's just see, and I, I like your decision. Let's see how this all evolves, see what it turns out to be. And Mike's issues on insurance are important. And then let's see who the carriers are that come back, because we did lose somebody, and see what's gonna happen. So thank you. Thanks for your efforts. Thank, thank.
I would agree with Jane's point, that if you, if you hired someone to come in and put in a bunch of scooters, you might have a bunch of people picking them up and riding them around, because, hey, it's right there, I'll give it a try. But, you know, ten years ago, none of us had these phones. And now I guarantee everybody in this room has these phones. So it's whatever development catches on sort of organically and grows naturally, so to wait until that happens and see if that's it. Like Christina said, it may be something different. It may be some little flying thing, you know, that, that we don't even, can't even imagine yet what that will be. So I really appreciate all the effort. And I just want to comment to my fellow council members, this is the, through Tom's leadership, we, we have, we have a couple of our CSAC members here, and they are, they are, they are very, very passionate about this community. They want substantive issues to sink their teeth into. This is the kind of work product that we will get when we refer those things to them. And we appointed these people, and we say, you know, "Come on into council, and we need to interact with you." Well, here they are. And, and this is an extremely high-functioning, professional organization that is working for this body and for this community. I know when you came back with your mosquito policy, I know you put a ton of time into that, and we adopted that. And I think we're, we're gonna, I don't know, do we have to vote on anything? We just, I, I, it sounds like you've, you've gotten unanimous approval and support of this commission. So thank you for your service and everything that you do. I know that they are very anxious to get more important issues like this on their agenda, so thank you very much.
Be careful what you wish for.
Careful what you wish for. So anything else from council?
I have just one last question, and as to our chief here. Whether or not, I know right now, motorized vehicles are not allowed on the, on the shared-use path. And I don't know if that's enforced or not, because we have kids out there with these. But I would just maybe make a recommendation that, that for those who want to try this out, maybe we have a period of time where we allow kids to ride their motorized scooters. And so I don't feel like I get a ticket when I ride mine, or my husband rides his, that, that we have the opportunity to try it out. Because I think it's, I, I agree with John. I think as a community, we don't have large numbers of these, but we do have nice bike paths to go all over the city. It'd be nice to be able to use as a microtransit, so.
Chief, they're not allowed on the street right now, are they?
They're not allowed on the bike path either by law. So they're not allowed anywhere, basically. And I'm just, I'd like to see you be able to try the bike path out and see how it works out.
It'll evolve, and, and a lot of them are battery, you know, rechargeable, so it, it's not pollution. You don't have gas-powered vehicles out there. Plus, the bike paths are for transportation, right? No matter how it is that you choose to get transported. So, okay, Tom, thank you very much for coming in. We really appreciate all your service. Now we're gonna talk about pedestrian and bicycle bridge construction highlights and update at the express request of John Reiner.
You will be impressed.
I'm going to be, I'm waiting, I'm anxious to be impressed.
Good evening, members of council. During the last council, sorry. During the last council meeting, council requested a presentation providing an update on the construction of the pedestrian and bicycle bridge. We've gathered pictures and video of some of the highlights of construction thus far, and I will also outline what you can expect to see in the months to come during construction. As councils are aware, the concept of this bridge type and design goes back several years, and we've made a concerted effort to maintain all elements of this concept, all through design and through construction. Andres Studio out of California is the architect of this concept, and they were involved and part of the design team through design. And we also continue to consult them all through construction on decisions as we make those decisions, to make sure he approves of the decisions and we're consistent with the original concept. This bridge is very unique, and it's also complex. So I want to point out a few of the unique design elements. First, this is a cable-supported suspension bridge, and it has an S-shaped deck that passes through the main tower. The concrete main tower, or pylon as we refer to it, is an architectural element, and it's slender in shape, in the shape of a needle or a teardrop. The steel beams, which you see on the right, you see three sections, are triangular in shape, they're rather small, and each has a slight twist due to the curvature and the shape of the deck. The majority of the beams are ten feet wide, so that results in a four-foot concrete deck overhang on one side of the bridge. And as it passes through the needle, the deck and the bridge beams get widened out to fourteen feet. And then as it continues on towards the other end of the bridge, the beams narrow down to ten feet, and you have a, a four-foot concrete deck overhang again. So what this all means is that no two beams are alike, they're each unique, they're each challenging to fabricate. Every form that was used on the main tower is custom and different, no two forms are alike. The cable system is fully-locked coil cable, which can only be procured from three places in the world. So we've been working through all of those complexities, the project's gone very well to date. So I just wanted to make everybody aware of what makes this bridge so unique. We have an amazing team of industry partners who have contributed to the design and construction of the bridge thus far. TY Lynn led the design team all through design, which began in early two thousand and sixteen and concluded in early two thousand and seventeen. The design team also consisted of several local firms, including EMHNT and Resource International. We also had wind load testing that was conducted by RWDI in Canada to make sure that the wind, the effects of the wind on the bridge were adequate, and the bridge could handle those loads. The design team, all the members of the design team have stayed involved through construction. Kocozin's been the lead primary contractor, and they've done a great job all through construction thus far. Project manager, it's interesting to note, is actually a Dublin resident, it's Tom Graff. It's been an honor to work with all of these experts and engineers from all of these firms. These firms are located all over the world, and we've had a lot of meetings discussing the cable system, which is being procured out of Italy, the testing's been done in Germany. So when we have meetings to discuss those topics, we have people located all over the world. We have people in Italy, Germany, California, Kansas City, Columbus, and New York. So we have to schedule all those meetings, they typically end up being about ten o'clock, to work with all of the different time zones, so that everybody's workday is reasonable, and the meeting's held at a reasonable time for everybody. So bridge construction is a very linear and sequential process, so there aren't many work activities that can be constructed concurrently. Kocozin and their erection engineer, which is SVP out of New York, they were responsible for developing and engineering an erection manual outlining the sequence of construction activities, including false work, steelwork erection, cable installation, pylon forms, and temporary support structures. This manual took about six months to develop and finalize and get approved. The work product is an eighty-eight-page PDF that we worked with our communications and public information staff to turn into a video, which is what I'm going to show, which is really a great tool to help explain and demonstrate how this- a great tool to help explain and demonstrate how this bridge is coming together. So, this is a 45-second video that shows step-by-step the precise sequencing of construction that the contractor's having to stick to. And by following that sequence, everything will remain stable, and that's the sequence that we have to follow all through construction. So, if you watch closely, the top view is a side view of the bridge construction, and then the bottom view is looking at the bridge from above in the air. So, the foundations, abutments, piers, and pylon were built, setting the elevation, or the walkway elevation steel. Then the steel starts from the east side, goes through the pylon. They threaded the needle, they used jacks to raise the shoring towers over a foot to prepare for cable installation, install the tie-down cables, install the suspension, the main cable, install each of the hanger cables in the exact order that you saw. They lower down the jacks, measure all of the cable loads, pour the concrete deck, add handrail, lighting, and wind vane, and then remove the shoring towers, and then the process is complete.
Is that all it takes?
That's, that's all it takes. So, that is the sequence. Much of the first year of construction was focused on building the foundation of the pylon or the main tower, as well as the pylon itself. These are a couple of pictures of the foundation construction. You can see the cofferdam, which is the steel sheeting. That was installed to keep the river water out of the work area, and it worked very well, they used pumps also. On the right side of the screen is a CAD drawing that shows all of the rebar that's included in the pylon foundation within the concrete.
Looks like they had some serious limestone to go through, too.
Yes, yes. Bedrock's very shallow in this area. So, these are just a couple more pictures that show how dense the rebar is in that pylon, and how neat and tidy the placement was. Kukozin had one or two individuals that placed all the rebar in the entire pylon, it was a very slow and tedious process, and they did a great job. Pylon's 171 feet tall, and the rebar was placed, and the concrete was formed in 16 lifts. The rebar in the section of pylon around the eye of the needle was interesting, as it required quite a bit of overlap, and it also required that the rebar be bent to form the shape, and that was not an easy task at all. Picture on the right shows the temporary stair tower that was built for each lift up to the top of the pylon. These pictures are of the main cable anchorage that was installed at the very top of the pylon. This is a very large piece of steel, as you can see, and it weighs over 19, or over 9,000 pounds. So, you can see it being lifted off of the ground, and then you can also see it at the very top, once it was lifted in the air to the top. On your left is a CAD drawing of the rebar and anchorage that is inside of the east abutment, which is that concrete structure that exists over where the future East Plaza will be for the park. There's eight rock anchors that are installed, four of the rock anchors are installed on either end of the bridge, and each of those anchors has a design load of 950,000 pounds of force, and each one of them are drilled 55 feet into the bedrock. While the pylon was being constructed in Dublin, the steel beams were being fabricated in Tampa, Florida. Here are a couple pictures of the fabrication process in the fabricator shop, it was Tampa Steel. As I mentioned, each of the beams is triangular, there's bracing inside of the beams, and each one of them has a slight twist, which was really challenging for the fabricator to complete. These are a couple pictures that were taken when Kukozin was installing the steel beam through the center of the pylon. This was really a slow and precise operation, and it was executed flawlessly. Now, I'll talk a little bit about the cable system, which is what we've been working on for several months. The type of cable system is special, it's fully-locked coil cables, which are durable, they're more durable than your standard cables, and they're also more aesthetically pleasing. Cables are fabricated by Radialli in Italy. As I mentioned, there's only three companies in the world that make this specific type of cable, and Radialli's based out of Milan. The main cable which comes from, which extends from the pylon down into the earth, or is attached to the earth, is 120 millimeters in diameter, which is about five inches in diameter. And the hanger cables each extend from the main cable down to the deck, and those are what the deck hangs from. Those are approximately an inch and a quarter, or 32 millimeters in diameter. System consists of galvanized Z-shaped interlocking wires, and there's 430 strands of wires within each bundle of the main cable. So, we spent several months working through the testing specifications and working with the test labs that are over in Germany. Since the testing was being performed in Europe, and all the specifications were in US specifications, we had to reconcile all of the standards and the specifications. So, the cables went through very, very extensive testing at two different labs in Germany, because it takes a special lab and a special apparatus to actually perform the testing. There was fatigue testing, and that's what this video is showing. The fatigue test itself, this cable had to go through 2 million cycles, and it took 14 days for each of these cables to go through 2 million cycles. So, it just went back and forth and back and forth 2 million times. In the end, we completed all of the testing, the fatigue testing took over a month, just to make sure that the cables were sufficient, meets the specifications. In the end, all of the cables passed a couple of months ago. So, since they all passed all of the tests, they've been cut to length, they've been pre-stretched, and they've been socketed and prepared for shipment. These pictures are taken in Italy at Radialli's shop. The first picture is our designer on the left, Dan Fitzwilliam with TY Lin, Tom Graff, who is the project manager with Kukozin, who is the Dublin resident. And this is, they're posing, posing, taking a picture with the first batch of hanger cables that are ready to be delivered to Dublin. Middle picture is a spool of the main cable, and that's what it'll look like when it comes on a truck, when it's delivered to Dublin. And then the picture on the right is our designer and a rep from Radialli with the hangers that get attached to the cables. As far as the anticipated delivery schedule, this is what we've been anticipating for a few months. Currently, the cable, all of the cables are coming on one ship, so they're all being processed through customs in Genoa. By the end of the week, they will be on a ship, and they'll arrive in Norfolk, Virginia by the end of April, and then they will get on a truck and be delivered to Dublin, hopefully the first week in May. Or, yeah, first week in May. The lighting, these images reflect the illumination that we're working to achieve. We have an $835,000 budget within the construction contract with Kukozin set aside for lighting. Majority of the conduit and wiring throughout the bridge that exists today, or the steel beams, you know, we have conduit and wiring that runs through all of those triangular steel beams. We have conduit and wiring that extends from the, from the beams and the bridge that will be going to power services and control panels and like. We've been working with Live Technologies. So, we had, we had TY Lin design the bridge, they had a lighting designer, that was a couple of years ago. Lighting is always being improved, there's always new fixtures. We want to make sure that we have the most state-of-the-art lighting fixtures, the most durable, that'll last the longest, that are easy to maintain or reasonable to maintain. So, we've been working with Live Technologies, because they're a likely contractor that will help us maintain and help us program the lighting in the future. So, we've been working with them. We have been acquiring one fixture of each of the different lighting elements on the bridge, and we're waiting for the final fixture to arrive, so that we can then take a demo of each of the fixtures out at night. And we're actually going to demo the lights on the bridge, so that we can make decisions from there. Something else we've been working on, we have installed two sections of railing as a mockup. Those sections are installed out on the elevated walkway portion of the bridge. Handrail consists of galvanized cable, and the handrail cap is E-Pay hardwood. We've been working through some of the details with the contractor and the architect, and anticipate having a mockup that can be approved for production in the next couple of weeks. As far as the construction budget goes, the project remains within budget. Contract amounts up on the screen, it includes a $1.18 million risk reserve. We have encountered several risk events that have resulted in the expenditure of about half of the risk reserve thus far, which we're pleased with. And we also have five approved change orders to date. Construction schedule, as far as that goes, these are the activities that remain, and the tentative schedule for completion by the end of the year. Once the cables arrive in Dublin on the truck, and we are able to see them here and begin installation, then we're going to sit down with the contractor and pinpoint and refine the schedule moving forward, so that we can firm that up. And then lastly, at the beginning of construction, we mounted a camera on the top of the building that Cap City is located in, and we've had a live feed of the construction progress posted on our website for residents to check out. So, what we've done is we've taken one photo from each day of construction since the beginning and created a time-lapse video, and this goes through a couple of weeks ago. So, I will play that now. It's interesting, note the water elevation or the river elevation as it goes up and down through construction. So, you can see the rebar starting to come out of the ground, and they'll start building the pylon. You can see the keyhole or the eye of the needle start taking shape. See the seasons come and go, the snow. We had, last year was very, very wet, one of the, the wettest year on record, as Paul reminds me all the time. So, you can see the water elevation coming and going, it washes the causeway away, Kukozin had to rebuild the causeway. That's been some of the risk reserve money that we've spent. But it's pretty cool to watch it all come together, the pylons completed there, and then you can see the steel beams being set. So, as that wraps up, overall, the construction has proceeded very well, considering the unique and complex nature of the bridge and the partners all over the world. We have an amazing and very talented team working on the project, and we look forward to the remaining construction activities, and anticipated opening of the bridge by the end of the year. You have any questions?
Wow, fantastic. Thank you, Megan. Any questions from council? Yeah? All right. Well, thank you, John.
I think, you know, that was such an interesting and informative presentation that probably the, maybe part of that should be part of the state of the city for next year, because this is probably the most complicated project I've ever seen us undertake. Just the engineering is just mind-boggling. So, kudos to you, Megan, and thank you for handling this bunch of madness, it's just amazing.
Yeah, fantastic. Thank you, Megan. Appreciate it very much. Will that, any, will that time-lapse video be on our web, on the city's website?
We can put it out there.
Put it up there. Let's have people be able to watch it. It's pretty cool.
Okay, thank you.
Discussion of Council 2019 Retreat Report. Michelle.
Good evening, members of council. You have before you this evening a draft report of the council retreat, and this was in your previous packet for your review, and it's before you this evening for any comments that you may have related to this. Two important components of this report are that there are three visionary goals that are included in this, and we wanted to make sure that these accurately reflect council's intent. And then there are 20 policy topics that the council reviewed during the retreat, and then assigned either to council work session, a council committee, or board of commissioners. So, we want to make sure that those are accurate as well. So, this evening, we're asking for any comments you may have on this report, and then we are also asking for two motions. One would be to adopt the, adopt the report with any modifications that you may have this evening. And then the second one would be to direct staff to repair a resolution adopting the council goals that are contained in here, and we would bring those back at the next council meeting. With that, if you have any questions or comments related to the report.
So, I hope everyone's had opportunity to review the document, and, you know, we all brought some of the things that we were most interested in forward. You know, some of the things are finished already, the Parkland Feenloo, right? We voted on that tonight. Some of them are going to be projects that will take quite some time, likely won't be completed in the next year. So, did anyone have opportunity to review this? I know there was quite a bit of reading for this week. And do we feel like we're prepared to vote on this this evening, to move it forward? Or does anyone feel like they need additional time? Not everybody wants to push a button.
I have one small edit that I caught that needs to be made to it, so if I can just
I can't believe it.
Comment on that. On page three, the third visionary goal, there's a paragraph underneath that that describes it, and that last sentence is an incomplete sentence. It says, "Policies and tactics related to these various aspects," and then it ends. That should say, "Policies and tactics related to these various aspects will need to be developed and implemented."
You know, my thought when I was looking at those three goals, and this is certainly what we talked about, I, I think the first one, I think it's somewhat self-explanatory to make sure we have financial success and sustainability. The other two, I mean, the end reason for being the most high-connected and to really get good at data and collection, et cetera, is so that we can be sure we can deliver world-class service in a way that the, the world is changing. So, but as I looked at this, I, I just want to be sure that to what end is behind number two and number three? Why are we doing this? Not, it's not just an exercise.
Not the whats, not just the whats.
It's the whys, the whys. Yeah, and the first one, I think, does that quite nicely. The second two, I think, and again, I agree that these are exactly what we agreed, but to what end? And I think it would, they would be, from a visionary perspective, I think it's important for us to be, to be clear about that. So, I might, not to hold up a vote, but I might put that in there, so as the community reads it, why is it important we're doing this?
And I think we made an attempt to describe that underneath those last two, but it's not incorporated
Yeah.
Into the actual statement itself. I see what you're saying.
I just think the whys, yeah, the world, you know, we live in a high-band world, you know, for, if, we've got to do that. So, again, some, not to put more work back on you, but I think that would be, I think from the reader's perspective, I think that would be a useful
I think that could be a condition we would do
Yeah.
For the passing of that. I don't, is that problematic, Jennifer?
Okay. Does that make sense?
Sure, we can make those edits, and we can bring them back
Great.
Next time, as you adopt these goals as well. So, you would see those incorporated into that in a resolution.
We can add the edits.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I was just going to say that, in looking at those three goals, I think that second one in particular, broadband is, I think a broadband is just the dublink, do you know what I'm saying? And I think we talked about utilizing the connecting, the connection to actually encompass more of the connection with our community among each other, using technologies to be able to communicate easier. I think, I guess I'd like to see, for the same reason, the why of it, and broaden it to specify the intent of it. I think more than just being the broadband community, I think it has, I think of that as just dublink, and I'm afraid others will think of that the same way. So, I, I guess I would also agree with broadening that definition.
And I think the intent was behind this was just not only to look at the commercial extension through dublink, but also how do we connect our communities and neighborhoods
Exactly.
With
Yeah.
Sufficient internet services.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good. Well, we'll accomplish that through condition then, or do you want to bring it back?
Whatever your pleasure is, we can, we can bring it back with the resolution adopting the goals
Okay.
Revised report, if that would be.
Let's do that.
Okay.
So, then we don't need to vote on anything?
Not this evening, no.
And then if I could just draw your attention to one more item that was originally attached to the goal report, and that was the schedule, which lays out, and you have it, it was in your board pack, but also you have it within your folder that it is. So, this has council work sessions is the first section, and this includes some of the visionary, all the visionary goals, actually, the budget processes, and then several of the policies. And then it goes into the council committees. So, we've laid out the plan, the proposed plan for the council work sessions over the rest of the year. So, we just wanted you to look at that, see if there were any comments on that. And then I also wanted to draw your attention to, as you go down into the council committees, which is on the bottom of this first page, you'll see some that are in green, and then if you flip the page over, there's a few that are in green under the Community Development Committee as well. Those did not come out of council retreat, but those are items that staff is asking that those be assigned to these committees. So, we just want to make sure we got those topics where council would like them to be too, in those committees.
Community Development Committee is going to be busy, but
A little bit, a little bit busy.
Those temporary signs drive me crazy. You got to do some, who's our Community Development Committee? Is that you?
Yeah, time for pay raise.
You got to do some about those.
John, Patty and I.
Public Services Committee is
You'll be our honorary attendee that night, you can speak to it.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah. It's ugly.
Temporary about.
God.
Well, it's cold, hard facts.
Okay, no action needed, just asking if there's any comments. Thank you.
Okay.
Is that it? Are you finished with your discussion?
That is the discussion. Thank you.
Staff comments. Dana?
Good evening. There are a significant number of items in your informational reports and general correspondence. These are primarily updates and status reports relative to previous guidance that you provided us. Let us know if there's any information that's not matching up to your recollection of the matter, and we can discuss that. I have six items I want to highlight, though, out of that list. First is a memo reference to the Monterey planning process. We took time out this latter, the latter part of this last year in not pursuing this further. That was in my direction. We just had too much going on, so we just put it on the back burner. We intend to take that back up again. As you saw in the packet, there's a proposed timeline there, so you can let us know if you have any concerns with that, but I wanted to make sure you knew that this was getting back on track. The Memorial Tournament memo highlighting events and activities in the villa is also in your packet. If you have any questions about that, you can contact either Nancy or Sue. Aging in place update is in there as well. That's a general update, but secondary to that, there's also a memo regarding an aging in place citizen voluntary advisory team. This is really an ongoing effort of folks that have been engaged in this process, various partner agencies and the like, as well as citizen volunteers. Going to continue to try to round out that group. They function much like the bike ambassadors, or the park ambassadors, or the community service officers types of functions, not really a technical advisory committee as the others function, but if you know of others who may be interested, and we're looking for various age ranges to participate in this, please let Christine Nardekia know.
Can we change it to Buckeye, Forever Buckeye, or Forever, Dublin Forever? Sorry. Please, thank you.
So the answer was yes by Christine, for the record. Also, Conker Township, Shared Use Path, there, I think we celebrated that a couple meetings ago, only for that to come in over budget per the bids put out by Delaware County, I believe it was. I just wanted to raise that up so you're aware.
We could lend them the magic opener.
Excuse me?
We could lend them the magic opener.
Yeah, no kidding, yeah.
Perhaps.
So our staff is working with Delaware County and Conker Township to analyze that bid and see if there might be some things we can recommend, so I just wanted to make sure you knew we were proactively involved in that. The last, second to the last item is the, put a memo in your board pack late last week relative to the City of Worthington considering joining the Northwest Regional Emergency Communications Center. As you know, we service our night, provide 911 dispatching to several other entities. And the City of Worthington, we've been in discussions with them, but they, for the many reasons I, or the reasons I stated the memo, they wanted to take that under consideration at their city council meeting tonight, so just so you know, that's going to have a, probably a pretty open discussion in Worthington, so you're aware of it.
Dana, is that 911 only, or is that the rest of their dispatching?
It's police and fire dispatch.
So it's not service department, roads, and everything else? Do we know?
That includes all service departments, too, doesn't it? Or general dispatching? I know we do some of that in Arlington.
Yes, sir, that would include all resources dispatched.
Which is what we do for Norwich and Hilliard and so forth.
That's correct.
Arlington as well, correct?
Yeah, number one.
Thank you.
And the last item I want to bring to your attention, I just want to take this opportunity to recognize and acknowledge the passing over the weekend of Detective Eric Gilliland. Detective Gilliland served with Dublin Community since May 4, 1999. He retired from the city on March 28, 2019, just shy of 20 years. Eric has specialized and held ancillary assignments of detective, technical accident investigator, field training officer. Matter of fact, he was field training officer for Justin Pice. I know he had a great impression on Justin. He was an awards committee member and was on the FBI Child Exportation Task Force, and he was a bagpiper. You might have seen him bag piping at a lot of our events. Prior to his career at Dublin Department, at the Dublin Department, he was employed by the City of Bexley as a police officer, and also was at the Franklin County Sheriff's Office as a deputy sheriff in corrections. So overall, he had 28 years of combined service within law enforcement. He was a graduate of St. Charles Preparatory School, member of the Shamrock Club of Columbus, the Emerald Society, and president of the Columbus Carrick Club, so he was all Irish all the time, let there be no doubt. And Justin and I went and visited with him about a week before he passed, and he handed to Justin, it was a collection, it was a police officer's hat from Dublin, Ireland, was it not? And he collected a lot of the different crests that they wear in lieu of badges in Dublin, so it was a really cool collection, and he passed along. He leaves behind his wife Paula, the children Molly and Brian. Certainly will miss Eric, his talents. He was very passionate, immensely passionate, and we appreciate his contributions, so, anyway. Just want to share that.
Thanks, Dana. Committee reports, P and Z, Jane.
Planning and zoning met last week. It was pretty benign, but there was a conversation we had, there was some conversation about having speakers in the restaurants near the water. That's one of the conversations that neighbors talked about. The Pearl did get permission for speakers, but for any resident who lives in the area, if there's a concern, we would ask them to forward that, you know, back to the city so we can monitor that. But hopefully, it will be one that just brings a lot of wonderful music and sort of like happiness over at the riverfront, and it won't become a burden to anybody, so we're, planning and zoning is glad to do that. I also wanted to thank staff for the efforts that they're putting forward when it comes to improving the training and the resource manual and that sort of thing that's going on with the commissions. The next planning and zoning meeting, we don't have any applications, and we're using it for a full training session, so I appreciate all the work the staff's putting towards that, so thank you so much for that.
Thank you, Jane. Admin, Chris?
You should have in your possession the summaries, both written by Ann and Dana. I trust that you have had the opportunity to review those. I believe both of them asked for feedback, and I have not been copied on any of that feedback, but I trust whatever feedback you have, you will submit in short order, as we want to go ahead and make sure we get these into Human Resources and they become the full body of the review work. So if you have comments, please make those, and we will hopefully be able to put that into our Human Resources Department here before our next meeting, and then that will wrap up that review session.
Thanks, Chris. Community Development, John?
Nothing.
Finance, Mike?
Nothing at this time.
Public Services, Christina?
Nothing right now.
Cota, Kathy?
Yes, thank you. I had just a couple things in light of our conversation about electric scooters and mobility. There's a couple interesting things that are happening at Cota right now, or actually, I should say will happen over the course of the summer. The first of those is a launch of what they're calling the Mobility Hubs, and I'll talk about that in a quick second. And the second is a launch of the first ride-sharing pilot, so think Uber and Lyft, but this time that pilot would be run and owned by Cota. So a quick word on the Mobility Hubs. This is a concept that tries to encourage transportation providers, whether they're the not-for-profit organizations like Cota or the full-profit organizations like Lime Bikes, like the scooters, like taxis, et cetera, to designate certain, if you will, hubs in the city where a, someone taking one form of transportation could easily transition to another form of transportation, from micro to mass transit, et cetera, so forth. In order to do that, of course, there's a lot of technology involved, so there's a physical component to it, and there's an electronic component to it, back to the sort of smart city that we're talking about. So that experiment, if you will, is going to, will begin this summer. The hope is that a rider could have an app that could help them think at all points of that transportation rather than individual points. Again, why we need to be smart and connected, and then maybe even a single payment app so that I could, as some countries are starting to adopt, I could, through one single payment, ride the bus, take an Uber, ride a scooter, get to work, et cetera, so forth. So there's been a lot of interesting work on that, and that's going to, you're going to see that launch this summer. And the second one is a pilot between Cota and suburban city, not Dublin, to do this ride-sharing pilot, and I think that, those entities are talking through their MOAs right now. And the point of that would be to see what it's like for Cota to be able to provide sort of that last mile that now Lyft and Uber, and does it make sense to do that in a different sort of an economic way? So that pilot will take root, if you will, in July. So I think those will be fun to watch. I'll keep you updated as that transpires. And I, this ties in a bit to the transportation bill that just got passed. Part of that, as you might note, was actually a doubling of the amount of money per annum that's going to public transportation across the state to roughly about a $70 million mark. So I think part of that is, is the recognition that we need to find ways to think about transportation, not just maintenance, but changing the future. So I think that money will really start to spearhead some of this. So, interesting, and I'll keep you updated, but some fun things happening that really are, again, firsts, and really, some of them in the United States, but certainly in central Ohio, so.
Thank you.
Dublin, thanks Kathy. Dublin Friendship Association, Christina?
Nothing this time.
How about Warpsy, Chris?
No, the big conversation was on the gas tax passing, and I know that there are some questions, emails out to staff of what that's going to mean to us, and hopefully we'll see answers to those in short order. I think that's going to be occupying that space for quite some time.
Logan Union, Champaign County Regional Planning Commission, Kathy?
Yeah, just a couple things. I really haven't given an update in a while on this. I just wanted to make a couple points back to the earlier comment that Jane made about the importance of training. The group has really put a lot of effort into helping their boards and commissions, particularly some of the smaller townships, come up to speed, so maybe as we continue to work on this, we can find ways to connect the dots here, because that's been an important thing. The other thing is the group is working hard, really, on census preparation, and I, it's not something that we have talked a lot about, but I think that's going to be something we should talk about a little bit as we move forward here. But the role there, if you think about the geography and preparing for that, so that the group is doing some work there. And then I think I may have mentioned earlier that Champaign County, they're really doing their comprehensive plan, so like everywhere else, they're seeing a lot of change, and we're going to see that back at the end of the year. And my only other final comment is that there's just been a lot of activity out there like we're seeing here, so that that group has done a lot of zoning activities, et cetera. And I wanted to say thank you to Tammy Noble from our group, who really is the liaison and keeps us connected and keeps us informed, because there's a lot of activity, and so I appreciate her work on that. So, thank you.
We'll stay right with you. US 33 Innovation Corridor Group.
We're going to meet on Friday.
Okay. Let us know how that goes. Double Arts Council, John?
Let's see, tomorrow we're going to open up an polycultural celebration, and it'll be from 6 to 8 o'clock. There's also a board meeting for the Arts Council, and as you know, probably not enough funding, really, to pull off the Dublin Bread Festival this year, so they're going to return the money back to the Arts Council, or to the committee. And I think that everybody, they'd like to thank the city for the past support the last number of years. It was a very interesting festival and very well done. And I'd also like to remind everybody that the Garden Party is May the 3, from Friday, which would be Friday from 6:30 to 9:30, so you're all welcome to the big fundraiser at, it'll be at OCLC at the Conference Center. And that is it for the Arts Council.
Thanks, John. Dublin Board of Education, Christina?
Nothing this time.
And I have nothing to report from Washington Township. I don't see Eric or the chief here. Dublin Bridges, Jane?
We're meeting this Thursday.
Okey-dokey. So we'll stay right there with you to kick off Roundtable.
Well, I want to mention that we, many of us went to Chief Eckersburg retirement. It was wonderful, and Chief, you did a great job in giving him a send-off. I also want to mention that there were a couple of youth that came all the way from Cleveland, who started a nonprofit on their own, they're juniors and seniors, to elevate the image of police and our first responders, especially the police, to the public. So they drove all the way down here, and you made them feel very, very special. I want you to know, taking time to take pictures and talking to them, and I'm sure you'll see more of them, so it was a wonderful send-off. It was just beautiful. And then I also want to thank Christine Nardekia for the Engage Cities effort. We didn't make the finalists, that doesn't mean that we didn't deserve it, but we didn't make it. She did an awful lot of work to elevate the Amazon effort and the seniors, and I know that they called her and they interviewed her and said that they really wanted to learn more about how we engage people in our community, so we won that award, and thank you for your effort on that. And then the last thing I just want to ask is that, at the last council meeting, just maybe check the minutes, I had requested some copies of some updates on some things, check the minutes, and I didn't get some of those forwarded, and I'd just like to have those, so. Like on the Mobility Study, and I think my computer, obviously, just went to, you know, locked up. So if you could just take a look at that, and those are just, that's housekeeping for me, so, thank you, that's all.
Thanks, Jane. Kathy?
Thank you. Sort of three things. Again, my congratulations to Chief and moving on his next career phase, and I also wanted to say Jane and I had the privilege to attend the promotion ceremony of eight members of the law enforcement, so that was really wonderful and so impressive. I, it always amazes me, and it shouldn't anymore, but the amount of leadership and dedication and talent that we have in the city, and it was wonderful to be part of the promotion and to see the families, too. So I want to congratulate everyone and thank them again for letting us be part of that. That was great. And congratulations to Doug McCullough for being named the 2019 Among Them Government Top 25 Doers, Dreamers, and Drivers. So I got a belief for a technology group, that must be a really hard report, thing to win, I would think of all of that, so congratulate him. I also had the opportunity to attend the Technology Advisory Committee meeting, which he chairs this last time for the first time. It was hosted at Fuse, which is a really cool place, if you haven't had a chance to go in there, and you really just don't wander in there, but some people do, I'm told, to see what they sell. It's in the shopping center up there.
You go in there for their beer.
Yeah, so, right. So it was really impressive, and the purpose of this particular meeting was to look at scenario planning and strategic planning, and so Doug presented some scenarios that could happen in the city, and really had some very thoughtful and meaningful conversation with our technology leaders, and so I want to thank them. We're really fortunate to have them, and we think back of our strategy goals to be the smart city, we're only going to do that if we do that all together. So I, if you get a chance, Doug says to be sure to invite everybody else to come to those. It's really an impressive group, so I thank him, congratulate him, and I feel confident that we're going to be able to accomplish some of these with their help. And the final thing, if I could, I wanted to talk a little bit about the North Pool and some of the work to date. Greg, as you mentioned, you know, it's early days, but I wanted to share a little bit about the process to date, and then look to Dana for a comment here. I just want to make a point that it is important, certainly, that when it's time to update any of our facilities, and including certainly the pool that's now 30 years old, that we step back, that we look at, you know, what it means not only to update that current facility, but also to reflect on the current needs of the community, the future needs, et cetera, so forth. And so that's messy work, of course, and that's what's been going on here, and that's what's happened. And to that end, there's just been a lot of conversation and a lot of feedback and a lot of surveys. And two very important things have come out of that, if I could summarize that. And the first one is that there's a growing need for increased aquatic activity and facilities in Dublin and across the region. I know this is not new. I know it's been talked about for quite some time, but it's really become clear as part of this that we have a growing population of students, competitive swimmers, and those who just want to swim as part of a healthy lifestyle, that there's distinct needs for that. The second thing, that it's also important to realize that there's very distinct needs for our summer recreation, for which that pool was originally built. And I think the challenge, and one of the things that we're hearing very much from the residents, is that when we think about this, it's very difficult to think about-
the residents is that when we think about this, it's very difficult to think about how do we combine those two specific and distinct needs? And can updating the North Pool be an answer to do both of those distinctive and unique things? And many residents, including some of those that you heard tonight, are, you know, are concerned that perhaps we can't do all of those things in one particular geography and that we need to think about this project in, in both, what do we need to do in that particular community and then what do we need to do at a greater thing? So as we move forward, and I know I've discussed this with Dana and with the staff, and I believe the next steps is they're going to consolidate this finding and bring us back some recommendations to think about these two distinct needs and provide some recommendations to help us streamline and, and those continued conversations. So over the next few months, because this pool, as we all put in our capital plan, is supposed to, to begin construction in 2020, we need, we need to make some decisions and some recommendations here. So I think both of those are distinct and important needs, and I know that we need to, I think, bring back to this group some recommendations so that we can advance this in a meaningful way. So Dana, I know we had talked a little bit about some timing for recommendations. If you could share just a little bit about where you are on that.
We have a memo draft that'll be at your next meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy. John?
Yeah, I just want to say hail to the chief. He was a bright light and a wonderfully positive force in the history of our city over the last, God, 30 years, I think. I met him as a patrolman. I think we may have had three or five police officers back then. What a great guy. So I hate to see him go. We have a great replacement sitting right there though. So it's going to be, it's going to be wonderful. Want to say that I think those of you who are involved in Dublin Irish Festival that work it, I think there's a meeting tomorrow night. There's other meetings for tomorrow night, so there's going to be some conflict trying to get to all the different things. So I just want to give you a heads up and that's always an interesting meeting, sort of forecast what we're going to see here in the first weekend of August. That's it.
Thanks, John. Mike?
I'd say the same, echo the comments of John's with respect to Chief. We're going to miss him. We've got a good replacement here and looking forward to working with, with you as well, Chief. So I'm sorry I wasn't able to attend, I was out of town, but I did talk to Chief Hines and told him that we would catch up in London and maybe get a tour of the, of the facility. So he was very helpful as I served on the Ohio Collaborative. In fact, to, many times he got very, what's the right word, Dana?
I don't know. I'll let you decide what that word is.
Well, he was, stubborn would be a good word. Yeah, we, yeah. With respect to a few of the words, but he stood his ground and we finally ended up compromising. But he was very instrumental in the collaborative in, in, with respect to his role at the Ohio Chiefs Association. And, you know, we're going to miss him, so thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Christina?
Ditto. Everything said about Hines and Justin. Sad to see Hines go, really happy that Justin is here. So thanks for stepping into Philo's shoes. A question for you. So I'm particularly sensitive to this because I have a senior. Do you have any stats on what's been going on with this whole senior tag thing? Because I got to tell you, I'm sort of disgusted with the activities that go along with this whole thing. This was not something I experienced growing up.
No, I'm sorry, I don't have any information tonight. It's certainly something we can follow up on and, and report back to you, so.
Because some of the stories I'm hearing now, given they're told to me by teenagers, so I'm not sure how reliable they are, but some of them are really graphic.
Right, yeah, no, it's, it's, I suppose something that comes around every spring that we kind of hear about and, and maybe run into on occasion. And sometimes it's a matter of by the time it's reported, us getting to the situation and it's, you know, since changed.
Yeah.
I suppose. But yeah, we can certainly look into it. We're well aware of it though, and our patrol officers.
I figured you were.
Do a good job, and our school resource officers about keeping awareness of that particular activity. So thank you.
Yeah, thanks, I appreciate it. Just out of curiosity, along the lines of the Dublin Irish Festival, I know that we have a new VIP ticket set, the Trinity Experience. So they're sold out. Were there, there were only seven pairs of tickets available?
I'm not, I'm not sure what you're referencing. Can you?
Well, it says that we, we pulled an 87.50 from the sale of those tickets and a pair of tickets is 12.50, so do the math. So I was just curious about how that worked. And maybe I can reach out to Allison and ask her, would that be a better idea?
Well, I mean, we're certainly checking advice on that and get back.
Yeah, I was just curious about the, how you guys came about with the number that would be available.
Sorry, I don't know that top of the head.
No, it's okay. Someone asked me about it and I was like, I, that's a new one for me. So that's fine, I can reach out to Allison as well, I can shoot her an email and copy it on her.
I'll make, I'll make a note.
Okay, I appreciate it. It was just curious about it. That's all I have for this time.
Thank you, Christina. Chris?
A couple things relative to the information only memos. First, it was nice to see that we were increasing our revenue sponsorship for our events cumulatively. So appreciate the efforts in trying to offset the costs of those in the community. I read through the historic and cultural assessment timeline and I really liked the ideas of placing our walls on the historic inventory and assigning those to ARB. I think that is probably a really appropriate thing to do. They're crumbling fast with the passing of every high tonnage truck that vibrates the road, they're disintegrating. So I'd like to do that in short order if we can. Looking forward to the code and design guidelines and I haven't seen any meeting minutes or anything from that, from that committee meeting. I'm assuming that they've met regularly and that we'll just see that all in one felt swoop near the end. And then the last thing I had is I had the opportunity to address the YPA Leadership Graduation on the 4th and just wanted to congratulate those folks for completing that class. It was, they were an impressive bunch and I enjoyed my time with them.
Thank you, Chris. Yeah, our hearts go out to Detective Gilliland's family. He was a really special guy. I saw him, bagpipes have a tendency to make you stand out in a crowd, so I probably encountered him more in that capacity than any other, but he will be missed. And, and with respect to Chief Hines, is it true, I'm sitting here Dana, looking at the names, so it went, there's only been four police chiefs back to 50 years? So you have Hines, Epperson.
He started with Chief Mayor.
Bob Mayor.
Bob Mayor.
And Farrell.
Was when he was hired, then Ron Farrell.
Guy.
Rob Geis, Mike Epperson.
And so six chiefs go back all the way to the beginning. So you are in very, there's, it's very thin air up there, Chief. And, and I mentioned it, it, well, that too.
It was air, A-I-R.
At his.
Thin air.
At his reception, I mentioned, you know, Chief, Chief not only showed us how you protect a community, but he showed us how you serve a community. There were so many different community events where Hines was in the front row, making